Commissioners, and with that, I'll call this session into order. I'd like to read our normal Zoom meeting. This meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order Number 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. Do you have a motion?
Somebody is here.
Have a motion and a second. Call the roll, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Gammon?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Rather?
Yes.
Mr. P. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Did you hear my yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Trey Gooch, our chaplain, for our prayer and our pledge. Trey, if you would stand with us, please. I guess everybody but me standing, so.
Let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh, Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. And, Father, as you know, there is much chaos and division in our country right now in a very unprecedented way. So this is what we want you to do. We want you to fill the hearts and the minds of all of America, so that we may once again show love and respect to each other, especially those whom we disagree with. Father, we thank you so much for blessing Rutherford County, Tennessee, with many dedicated employees, public officials. And there's two that I would like to especially mention tonight, and that is our Finance Director, Lisa Nolan, and her sidekick, Mark Tucker. Father, we know that they work tirelessly, day in and day out, for the people of Rutherford County. And so we want you to rein your blessings upon them and bless them in days to come. Father, we want to ask you to be with our men and women who represents the United States overseas, our diplomats, and especially our people in military, and we ask that you will bring them home safely at the appointed time. Father, we thank you for Jesus Christ, your Son. We pray for that day where we will see him once again, face to face. And until that day comes, may the love of God, the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, and the fellowship of the Holy Ghost dwell in our hearts tonight and forevermore. And it's through Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tennessee pledge, do you know it?
Some of it.
(laughing).
Three white stars on a field of blue.
God kicked them through and ever true.
Flag of Tennessee.
Pretty good. Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, call the roll, please, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gammon?
Here.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Here.
Commissioner Kush?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Gurley?
Here.
Commissioner Blair?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Gammon?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Present.
Mr. McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner Ely?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Mr. Serrano?
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you. This time, we're scheduled to have public comments. We've had no one sign up, so there's no public comments tonight. We'll get right into our agenda, item G, which is elections and confirmation. I'll call on... I'm sorry. I'm usually the one that does that. I guess that's the reason I skipped it. We need to read and approve our minutes, and I'll call on our Steering Committee Chairman, Craig Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I have went over the minutes. I do have one item. On item N4, rezoning request, RE220-007, we were supposed to have addition of turning lanes, and that was not in there. Other than that, all things look good, and I make a motion to pass in dispense of the reading.
I have a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of N4 and a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Here.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'd like to also thank Commissioner Stevens for bringing that omission up on last meeting's minutes. Thank you. And now we'll call on our Steering Vice Chair, Pettis Reed, for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have had an opportunity on SharePoint to see a listing of the notaries. You may also find a listing of upcoming notaries on your iPad there this evening. Mr. Chairman, I move the confirmation of election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Any additions? We have a motion to approve the notaries and a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Harris, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
On item two, Steering wishes to announce two vacancies on the Lineball Library Board, terms to expire in June 2023. Item three, Steering wishes to announce one vacancy on the Stones River Regional Library Board, term to expire June 2023. Item four, with item four, I wish to ask that Lori McDonald, please come forward at this time, as well as rest of the medical examiner team and our director. That should come right up here. Director Hudgens, I wish that you would just introduce these individuals to the arrest of the commission at this time.
To my left is Dr. Lorraine McDonald. I've had the privilege of working, knowing her for about sixteen, seventeen years. She is our county medical examiner, so anytime we're investigating a death and we send it for an autopsy, she is the one that we warp through to make sure everything is done right. And she's been with us a while. She actually took Dr. Warner's place after he had passed away years ago. I'd recommended her, and she's been a very wonderful partner for us. And things are being done correctly. So when you don't hear about stuff, that's good, because she makes sure we're doing it right. And next to her is Denise Martin. I hired Denise, what, three months ago, four? She's my forensic expert, and so she also keeps our investigators in line. She's done it for many years. She's well-respected across the United States, and we're very lucky to have her. And the county medical examiner's office will be top-notch very soon. We will be setting example for the rest of the country, and I'm proud that we have both of them, and we were very fortunate to have them. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director, for introducing these individuals. I think it's important you see who is looking after your county and what we have, and we do have some excellent individuals to do this. And I brought them up for item four, that deals with the confirming of the appointment of Lori. I've had the opportunity to sit in on a lot of meetings with these ladies, and they do know what is important for Rutherford County, and they do know their business and what's important for us. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, we would like to confirm the appointment of Lori McDonald, county medical examiner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and several seconds. Any other discussion or questions? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. At this time, if you'll notice on the back of your agenda, there's item L, and this is a process for external investigations of the Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office. And since we've just discussed that office, and I'll ask, without objection, I'll move that agenda item up to now on our agenda. So when we've got Pettis up and even the medical examiners up, we can go ahead and take care of that. Any objections? Pettis?
Commissioners, we have discussed this, and we're looking at the possibility of a grant, and I think it's going to be very important to the county. It's the Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant, and you've heard us speak many times about the importance of a forensic center here and what that could mean to us. But we're looking at something else that possibly could help us now. And with this grant that we're trying to get, we could go into a little different manner of processing some of the things we're doing through our, as you've seen right here, the individuals we have mentioned to you. I'm going to ask you at this time if you could come forward and explain this to us, because I think you've done most of the work on this, and I'm going to ask you to come forward and explain the grant and the process we're going through this.
Thank you, Commissioner. I believe I have spoken to many of you recently in regard to this grant. It is the Paul D. Coverdale Grant for Forensic Science Improvement. We did bring this to the commission for approval to go forward and apply for the grant, which we are in the process of doing. The main items in the project that we are looking to do is to convert an area of one of the EMS stations to have a true practice for Dr. McDonald and the investigators and myself to be able to work out of. Presently, we do not have an area which is appropriate for us to respectfully do examinations and procure toxicology specimens and other evidentiary procedures. So this would enable us to have a designated, safe, and respectful area to perform those examinations in, as well as to be able to submit those specimens to an accredited laboratory. It would also allow us to do some needed training for our investigative team, so that we can bring our office truly up to the national standards to which we are all trying to move towards. But part of this grant procedure is to have a certification that we follow, obviously, the rules and regulations that we should be following, and that we have to ask our county mayor, since he is the one that ultimately appoints Dr. McDonald or our county medical examiner position. So we need to ask our county mayor to be able to certify that we have an external, an appropriate external procedure in place to investigate any significant... excuse me, I use the correct wording before I say something incorrect. An external investigation service for any allegations of serious negligence or misconduct that substantially affect the integrity of forensic results produced by the Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office. So this resolution that I believe that you all have a copy of pertains to that. So it was prompted by the grant procedure, and we certainly need to have that in place in order to go forward with the grant application. But we are all in agreement, including Dr. McDonald, that this is a needed procedure that should be in place regardless. So this is, you know, the resolution that's been put before you to consider, to allow our county mayor, as well as our county medical examiner, to sign off on.
This is, I know this was a lot to lead you up to a resolution here all of a sudden, but I think it's important that you understand what we're talking about, because this grant would mean a lot to this county and what we have to do. You have within your packets, and you have received this, a copy of the information she's talking about right here. And the letter we have received from the state medical examiner saying that they will back us up on our procedures and what we do there. If anything goes wrong, they will do the investigating, so that there is an understanding. Before you can apply for this grant or receive this grant, we have to have this letter. We have the letter now, so we're in the capabilities of applying for this. Now we have to have a resolution from this commission telling us to go ahead, that we have it and we go from there. So at this time, I'm going to read the resolution to you. Whereas in order to apply for and receive certain grant funds benefiting the Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office, it is necessary to have an appropriate process in place for external investigations into allegations of serious negligence or misconduct that substantially affects the integrity of the forensic results produced by the Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office. And whereas such process is further described in the process for external investigations of the Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office, attached hereto as Exhibit 1 requires the county mayor's office to forward any such allegations to the Tennessee State Chief Medical Examiner, who has agreed to conduct such independent external investigations. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the process for external investigations of the Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office attached hereto as Exhibit 1 be, and the same is hereby approved, resolved this 11th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I hereby so move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion or the resolution? Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. Appreciate you. I know you all are getting tired of looking at me, but I've got one more thing before I get out of here. Mr. Chairman, I would like to call for a motion to suspend the rules to present a resolution to honor our law enforcement.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Any discussion on that? We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gammon?
Work.
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
At this time, I would like to ask Lieutenant Call from the Laverne Police Department. Is there anyone here from Eagleville? MTSU Sheriff, Sheriff Mike Fitzhugh? I think Captain Smith from the Murfreesboro? And from Smyrna? Anyone here from Smyrna? We'd like to ask y'all to come forward at this time. Resolution of recognition and sincere appreciation for the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, the citizens of Murfreesboro, Laverne, Eagleville, Town of Smyrna, and the Middle Tennessee State University Police Department. Whereas Rutherford County is fortunate to have dedicated and committed officers of the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, the cities of Murfreesboro, Laverne, Eagleville, Town of Smyrna, and the MTSU Police Department. And whereas our officers put their lives on the line each day while safeguarding, protecting the citizens of Rutherford County. And whereas our officers perform stressful, demanding job duties to the benefit of all citizens in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 12 months each year. And whereas it is appropriate at this time to recognize the value and importance of the duties that our police officers perform day in and day out, to all citizens of Rutherford County, and to thank our many officers that self-susceptively... yeah, I almost messed that one up, didn't I? ...risk their lives to serve and protect all citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and the mayor that we hereby recognize and extend this resolution of recognition and a sincere appreciation to the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, the citizens of Murfreesboro, Laverne, Eagleville, Town of Smyrna, and MTSU and the police departments for their bravery and outstanding performance in caring for and protecting all the citizens of Rutherford County, resolved this 11th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
We want it known that all these departments, is that this commission has your back, and we appreciate you. Any of you like to say anything?
Well, I'll speak for the sheriff's office and those that are not here in attendance tonight, how much we appreciate this. It means a lot to our men and women in law enforcement, and the most important thing is, is the importance of the backing of this commission, and for that, we appreciate it. Thank you. On behalf of the men and women of the Murfreesboro Police Department, I'd like to sincerely thank each and every one of you. We appreciate your support, we really do.
Thank you.
On behalf of Chief Walker at Laverne PD, want to thank you for the resolution. Really appreciate at this time the kind words and the support.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Thank you. We have a couple of minutes left before our public hearings are scheduled, and without objection, I'd like to recognize Dana Garrett from our Health Department to give us kind of an update as to where we are. Without objection, I'll recognize Dana. Are you on the Zoom, Dana?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me just a moment to update you on our community Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me just a moment to update you on our community Corona response. First, just a little update about both our Health Department facilities. We are still operating under our continued operation plan that happens during emergencies. Both facilities are still offering all services. Some of them are over the phone, some are telehealth, and some are being done in person. We just recommend that anyone who needs services from either of our sites in Murfreesboro or Smyrna, just give us a call and we'll be able to take care of you and tell you what needs to happen over the phone. We also ask that people be a little patient with us. We are measuring about 200 phone calls every 15 minutes during our busiest times, so sometimes you will get a busy signal or you will be put on the queue for several minutes. Just be patient with us. We will spend just as much time with each of the residents when they call to answer all of their questions. We've implemented the state's infection control measures at both our facilities. All patients and vendors and staff are asked questions about contacts and that, and check their temperature before they come in so that we can maintain infection control as best we can. We're cleaning on an hourly basis at both facilities. We're practicing the social distancing that's recommended, and we're wearing masks. All visitors wear masks in our facility. We're still testing free and daily at the Murfreesboro site. We tested about 200 to 250 persons a day at the Health Department. We're, a lot of our staff are working seven days a week, still making sure that patients are contacted with their results on Saturdays and Sundays, and we do all the contact tracing and things that have to happen. Cannot wait for Monday. It is still recommended, if you have any doubt, to come and get a test. You can call before you come, and we'll give you a good time to come, so you won't have to wait as long. That's what's recommended. We are distributing cloth masks again. We have those at both sites for free, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. You can just pull up and get one of those masks from either of the Health Department if that is something you or your family need. Our current numbers of cases, we have overall total since this started, 1,620 positive cases. 709 of those are recovered. Right now, our hospitals are maintaining, we're not overloading the system at this point. We're overall about 10% positivity rate to total tests done, so we're still staying, we've been as low as nine since we started tracking this, and so we've seen a little uptake since Memorial Day, but we are still staying around 10%. That's pretty much just a quick little update of our activities and what we've been doing and what's continuing to happen at the Health Department and for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Any questions for Dana while she's available? Thank you, Dana. Appreciate that. Before we get into our public hearings-
Thank you, guys.
-I'd just like to announce that you're looking at me tonight because our county mayor, Bill Kethren, is feeling under the weather, and he's attending the meeting on Zoom and can help us through any roadblocks that we might come up against. But as you can see him there on your screen, he looks fine, but he's just feeling a little bit under the weather tonight and has asked me to sit in his seat tonight, and I'll endeavor to persevere and get through this tonight. It's 6:30, and we're scheduled for our public hearings. Item J1, rezoning request number REZ20-008, Turn Cal Holdings by Dalen Stevens, located along Mason Court. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG, commercial general. The size of the site is approximately 14 acres. Doug Demossi, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. As stated, this property is located along Manson Court. The applicant's proposing to zone this property to commercial general in order to develop a construction headquarters on the property. This would include an office, shop, maintenance and equipment, which couldn't be handled on the job site. The applicant has included a concept plan, which is with your iPads on your agenda packets tonight showing the proposed layout. Just understand, this is not a plan development application, so as such, this isn't a binding site plan, but this will give you an idea of the direction that they're wanting to kind of move toward. The property immediately to the west was recently annexed and zoned into the city of Murfreesboro. There's been some discussion on the proposed entrance to this property right now along Manson Court. That portion of Manson Court is actually part of the TDOT right-of-way. There's been a lot of discussion regarding that, TDOT abandoning that right-of-way, if so, becomes part of the city and then having to work out access. That's something that the applicant is aware of and has been working with TDOT and the city on, just something to bring to your attention on that. Access would be along Manson Court in one way or another, since, and I already discussed the whole thing about TDOT, so I won't get back into that. Commercially zoned properties are required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned properties. This concept plan does show existing tree lines. Some material would have to be removed for the development should this application be approved, but the remaining plantings could be counted toward the buffering requirement, and if needed, they would submit a landscape plan along with their site plan to show any additional plantings that might be necessary to kind of close in any bare areas. Also, the performance standards that are in our zoning ordinance would apply to this site. There was some discussion regarding access to this property, which I briefly discussed just a moment ago. Again, the applicant would be the one who would have to work out access with this tract with the city of Murfreesboro and TDOT. The process for that right-of-way abandonment with TDOT was also discussed. After the discussion of all this, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application by a unanimous vote, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing no one, I'll call the Board of Commissioners into recess for our public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward, and if you're on our virtual meeting, you may recognize yourself at this time. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and the Board of Commissioners back into session, and I'll call on Commissioner Joe Gurley.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this as requested.
With all staff comments? Correct? Joe, with all staff comments? Very good, thank you. We have a motion to approve-
Second.
-and a second. Any other discussion? I almost did it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Item J2, rezoning request REZ20-009, David Alcorn, located at 4613 Veterans Parkway. Existing zoning is CS, commercial services. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Size of the site is approximately six acres. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property, that's the subject of this request, was zoned commercial services back in 2016 for the applicant to operate a real estate company. The existing house is used as an office, and the accessory structure behind the house is used for equipment storage, consistent with what their zoning application stated. According to information provided by the applicant, he has an automobile dealer's license but needs a location to keep his license active. The property needs to be zoned properly, however, in order to allow him to have his license at the site. He doesn't want to actually build a car dealership on the property, and he should be called in, so I'm sure he'll speak more to that, but again, he needs to have the proper zoning in order to do that, and commercial general is the first commercial zone of the three main commercial zones that we have that would allow for motor vehicle sales as a matter of right. Again, he's not planning on using the property for a car sales lot, but he understands if he does, he would have to submit a site plan for our review and approval. Access would continue to be on Veterans Parkway. This segment of the street is within the city limits of Murfreesboro, so any redevelopment of this property would require a new or modified access points. They'd have to get approval from the city, but again, no further development is expected as a result of this application. Landscaping, performance standards, everything there would be the same as we discussed with the last application as well. Again, there was a little discussion on this item at the Planning Commission's meeting. There was some discussions as far as the comparisons between commercial services and commercial general. We discussed those for a little bit, but after hearing from the applicant and discussion the public, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request, again, by a unanimous vote, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi at this time? No questions? At this time, I'll call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners into recess and open our public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for this rezoning request for David Alcorn, either here or on Zoom, please speak now or come forward.
Yes, my name is Charles Lee. I would like to speak, please.
Sure. Name and address, if you don't mind.
My name is Charles Lee, and I live at 4723 Veterans Parkway. I live to the right of Mr. Alcorn's property. I am concerned about the rezoning and am concerned because we, like we said, it went from a residential area to a commercial service in 2016 with Mr. Alcorn telling us that the only reason he was needing it is to work out the home with his business and to store commercial, uh, equipment behind it, which is what he's zoned for and what he's doing. And as of yet, it's still, the front of it is maintained like agriculture, by running some cows on it. I believe his father is running it. And now the rezoning is, it concerns me because he wants to rezone it for, because of the license that he claims, that he has to have a commercial property to hold the license. I know plenty of people that don't hold, that buys and sells cars that doesn't own commercial property, so I find that kind of hard to believe that he has to have it to keep it. I asked, when I called about the conference call, about that, and they said, well, we just, you know, just write down what he is actually telling us, whether it's true or not, you know, they don't confirm it, but the fact is, is he wanting to rezon it for something he don't claim to use, then it just brings a red flag to go to all that trouble to rezone for something that he claims that he ain't gonna use. And I really don't want to see a car lot beside me or anything that this rezoning would allow this person to do on the property that, in a residential area with covenant restrictions on it already, that he has done, well, commercials not within the covenant really, but anyway. And I believe that it just brings up a lot of concerns to me, you know, for, to be able to want something changed but have no intent to do nothing with it, it doesn't serve the purpose. His rezoning that he already has serves the purpose of his business being there and operating the way it should. And I think that's about all I really wanted to say, and I sure appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
Yes, Commissioners, this is David Alcorn. I'm the applicant on this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I understand Mr. Lee's concerned, and just to clarify, to have a license, an auto dealer's license, you have to have a commercial address, whether you rent it for a lot, and it has to be zoned in the county, commercial general, for commercial services. To clarify, to use the license versus having a car lot like Mr. Demossi mentioned, we understand to have an actual car lot, we have to go through a site plan and such like that. That is not our desire. Our desire is to be legal with the state of Tennessee to have our license registered with this address. The, of course, for our location, we've got, you know, we're kind of on the outskirts of the city, but still in the county, we want to remain in the county because the look of what we're currently doing and wanting to do will remain the same. And yes, we do have some cows on the property, we have some equipment in the back, and the home on the property is being used as a office for us. And I just wanted to clarify what Mr. Lee was saying and what our intent is for the property.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Demossi, would you clarify for everyone the existing zoning and the proposed zoning? I think Mr. Lee was concerned about commercial, and if I'm not mistaken, it's already zoned commercial.
Yes, sir, it is. It's presently zoned commercial services. The county has three levels of what I would call our conventional zoning for commercial. It's commercial neighborhood, which is the most restrictive of the three. Commercial services is in the middle of the road, and commercial general is the most permissive as far as uses go. When it comes to automobile sales or any kind of motor vehicle sales, the first commercial zone of the three that actually allows that as a use by right would be the commercial general zone, so if they wanted to operate a car lot in a commercial services zone, they would not be allowed to. They would have to rezon the property. Yes, which part? The entire thing?
Not the whole part, but I guess the last part. So if Mr. Alcorn wanted to do, I guess, okay, give me examples of what could be built by right on commercial general.
Well, the big difference between commercial general and commercial services is the car lots, motor vehicle sales. That's the big one. There are other differences. I'd be happy to go through all of them if you want.
No, no, no. So what you said, if he decided, or I guess if he sold and another owner were to buy it, and they wanted to put up a car lot, then what did you say that would look like?
Well, if the property is, let's assume for the sake of argument at this point that the property is rezoned. If the property is rezoned, and let's just say he sells the property, somebody else wants to do a car lot on it, they would be allowed to do that. Now, they would have to do an engineered plan to show us how they're gonna do the display area where the office was gonna be, different things like that. They'd have to make sure it was up to county standard, so there'd be nothing that would prevent that from happening. Now, if it was zoned the way it is currently, let's say the, again, the property is not zoned, and somebody bought it and wanted to use it for a car lot under commercial services zoning, we would tell them they're not allowed to do that. They would have to go through this process that we're going through right now.
Okay, I'm looking at the lot here, and it seemed like that it's kind of narrow and deep. Would, just in your opinion, would that property be suitable for a car lot as far as the size, the entrance and exit and so forth?
Well, I think from just a size standpoint, now, are you gonna get a dealership like some of the bigger ones along Medical Center Parkway near the interchange? No, obviously not. But could you get some kind of a commercial use on this property with the size and the width that it is? It is longer than it is wide, but it's still a pretty good sized tract of land, so from a commercial standpoint, even if it's not a car lot, it could be any commercial use. There is, I think, commercial potential with this. The width of it does present some limitations, but there's ways around that, how you do the parking areas and things like that. So this isn't a situation where I'd look at and just say, I don't think commercial could ever happen here. You know, he could sell this property tomorrow as commercial services, and somebody could come in with some sort of a retail store or something like that and have a site plan developed. The big thing that they have to watch out for, especially in the county, is the location of their septic soils. That can play, make a huge determination as to how the site is laid out, but there's a decent amount of room on here to make something happen.
Okay, thank you. And may I continue to ask a few questions, or do I need to wait at another time?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the Planning Commission voted unanimously?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there was any discussion on maybe an opposing view like Mr. Lee as far as any kind of a fear that, like a car lot, could be there or?
There was some discussion on that, I mean, based on some of the same questions you're asking, as far as, you know, if he were to sell this property, even if he has no intentions of using it as a car lot, could he sell the property to somebody who does if the property's owned correctly? And the answer to that question is yes. So there was some discussion about that, but there was also discussion regarding just the area in general, kind of being a transitional area. You know, we've got a five-lane road, you've got, there's a city zoning map on your iPads as well in the agenda packets, kind of showing where the commercial zoning is in relation to this property on both sides, here and closer to the interchange, so there was some, there was discussion kind of both ways on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug, my ears may have deceived me, which is highly probable, but I thought- probable, um, but I thought Mr. Alcorn in his discussion just now said that his license needed to be tied to the property. Um, and I thought, I thought he designated both classifications of Commercial General or Commercial Services. Did I hear that wrong?
Well, I heard him say something about Commercial Services. Now, I, honestly, I couldn't exactly hear what he said. He may have said it needed to be Commercial General, not Commercial Services.
Okay.
But Commercial Services, from our standpoint, would not allow a car, would not allow for a, a motor vehicle
Right.
sales place.
And this is, this is important thing to, to understand because if, if, if it's okay to tie the license to the Commercial Services
There's no reason to rezon.
there's no need to even have this conversation.
Correct.
If, if, in fact, he truly does not intend to build a dealership on there or a car lot on there.
Right.
So could we ask Mr. Alcorn to repeat that sentence or Nick, do you know, I'm not, I know you're a smart dude, but I, I doubt you have, I doubt you know the laws of a dealership license if they have to be tied to certain types of property zonings.
I do not.
Okay. Um, could we ask Mr. Alcorn to repeat that one sentence about his, how his license has to be tied to the property zone, the zoning? Cause I thought I heard him say Commercial Services.
He'd say something about Commercial, but I couldn't tell what exactly he said either.
Yes, we can. Mr. Alcorn, you still, are you still on the line?
I am, yes, sir.
Did you understand?
Mr. Kush.
Did you understand the question?
I may have. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I may have confused Commercial Services, which we currently are, for Commercial General, which we're requesting, in order to have a sales license, state of Tennessee, we have to be, uh, action and, and Mr. Demossi probably has that too. I think we can do some car services, but we can't do car sales on Commercial Services. We need Commercial General and that's why we're requesting the Commercial General zoning.
Thank you. Does that clear it up?
Did that answer it?
Yes, thank you. Anything else, Doug?
Yeah, is Mr. Alcorn a question? Is that appropriate at this time?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Alcorn, my understanding is you're asking for this change because of to obtain a license, but is not your intent to put a car dealership there? Is that correct?
That is correct. My, I, I have a friend that's retiring that has a car license that he is selling to me, but in order for me to accept it and purchase it, I have to have a commercial address that's zoned Commercial General. And now, I have no intent to have a car lot that is staffed and, you know, with the whole floor plan. That's, that's not, it's more of a hobby. It's not a, it's not what I mainly do.
Any other questions?
Did you hear that?
Any other questions or comments? We have closed our public hearing, although we reopened it, uh, a little. Um, any other questions or comments? Let me just make one brief comment, uh, if I could. Uh, Planning Commission was considering mostly the rezoning of this property and not so much what the potential uses were. I think the potential uses were explained thoroughly to the Planning Commission, but we were not so much concerned about what was going on there, but with the zoning itself. And that's what we're considering tonight, is the rezoning. Uh, the, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the Planning Commission, whatever goes on there, will get another bite out of this apple as it relates to a site plan. And that site plan will have to meet all of our county standards before it's approved.
Question. Can it be rezoned with conditions to help protect Mr. Lee or not? Not at all? All or nothing?
Other questions? Ready to vote? And I'll call on Commissioner Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a few comments. So it would be kinda concerning, um, on Mr. Lee's thoughts and, and, and his rationale. However, I do know David Alcorn personally and I do trust him when he says he's, will do something or will not do something. So I will make a motion to approve with, uh, conditions and staff comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion to approve. And a second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Rather?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item J3, rezoning request, REZ 20-010, Matthew Kelly, located at 440 Baxter Road. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for Commercial Services. The size of this site is approximately five acres. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, this application comes as a result of a zoning enforcement action. Uh, the county's zoning enforcement office received a complaint about a business being operated from the subject site. Uh, after investigation, it was determined that a landscaping company was in operation, which had never received proper zoning approval. Uh, the applicant has submitted a concept plan showing the layout of the property. I've also included for the agenda packets, uh, the copy of the, what we call the permit summary, uh, regarding the different actions and things that our codes department has taken, or zoning enforcement office, I should say, has taken in regard to this particular application. Uh, access to this property would obviously continue to be along Baxter Road. Uh, should this application be approved, again, this was something we talked about at length at the Planning Commission, they would have to submit an engineered site plan showing how the property would be brought into compliance with county standards. Uh, this would include access, parking, and also any ADA compliance issues. Uh, commercially zoned properties are required to install a type two buffer adjacent to any residential property. Uh, should, again, should this application be approved, they would have to submit a landscaping plan demonstrating conformance with county requirements as part of their landscape, I'm sorry, as part of their site plan submittal, and performance standards would also apply to this. Uh, there was discussion on the zoning of the property and any previous commercial zoning approval. Uh, there were some comments made at the Planning Commission meeting. Apparently there was some sort of a small engine repair business or something on this property, but after looking through our files, excuse me, we didn't see that that was ever legally approved either. Uh, there was also some question about the, whether the entire property would need to be zoned, uh, the type of vehicles used in relation to the business, the type of materials being done on site, would there be any chipping? He said there would be, there would not be, and, uh, any possible noise concerns. Uh, staff reiterated their concerns regarding this application and the zoning of the property and surrounding area. Uh, after discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend denial of this application by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Questions for Mr. Demossi? Thank you. This time I'll, uh, declare the, uh, county commission into recess and open the public hearing for item REZ 20-010 for Matthew Kelly. Anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward or identify yourself.
Yes, this is Bill Jakes.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm a neighbor of Mr. Kelly's and, uh, he has, uh, been bringing me chips and whatnot. And when he, I did not know, uh, the circumstances, but he had asked me a while back if he could park some of his equipment on my property. And I am zoned agricultural, uh, and I was on a timber management program. So I thought that this would be okay until the county codes told me that could not do that. And Mr. Kelly is just a very, uh, very nice man. And when he found out that, uh, they weren't gonna allow me, uh, I told him how long he had to get the equipment off my property and he complied and, uh, very, very cheerfully. Uh, but, you know, I consider him essential and he's just, I, I've recommended him to my family and my friends, uh, to cut trees and whatnot, uh, through all these tornadoes and, and everything else. He's always done a great job. But other people that I have recommended in the past have been somewhat undesirable. They haven't finished or done what they said they would do or, or whatnot, but I don't know what's gonna happen. And I just wish we could find some way to let this gentleman park his truck somewhere, uh, where he could stay in business. I, I don't think that he really needs to have a paved parking lot and be ADA compliant and all this because he's gonna be going out to these customers at their houses to cut their trees and whatnot when they've fallen on their house or, uh, you know, it's just destroyed, uh, their property or whatnot. But like I say, uh, uh, he's a very nice gentleman and, uh, I trust him. And, uh, I, I just don't know, you know, what his recourse is, but I would love to see him stay in business. And, uh, there was some discussion at your last meeting about the traffic and this being a little two lane road. And, uh, you know, we have huge tractor trailers coming through here all the time. Uh, I've been told that they're taking pulp wood up to Woodbury to be shipped and used for, uh, dog bedding and whatnot. But, uh, they come through here on a daily basis and Mr. Kelly's trucks are much smaller than them. And of course, we've got tractors coming around the road all the time and, and I myself get on the road from time to time with my farm equipment and whatnot, but, uh, a lot of these trucks are pulling huge loads of, of round rolls of hay and stuff. And I've even had my mailbox knocked off, uh, by some of those loads coming through. But, uh, anyway, uh, I, I hope we can find a resolution to this. And, uh, I think that's all I've got to say for this evening.
Appreciate your input. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Could you repeat your name, please, for the record? Do you remember who it was? Jakes. Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? If not, I'll, uh, declare the public hearing closed and, uh, the county commission back into session. Uh, any questions or comments? Not all recognized. Commissioner Robert P.
Mr. Chairman, um, I've looked at this, talked to some of the folks on planning. I have not received a call from Mr. Kelly. Uh, unfortunately, I hadn't received a call from Mr. Jakes. This is outside of the areas where we normally allow businesses and that's basically why it was voted down at the Planning Commission, so I heard. Uh, he also does not live on this property, which sometimes we take that into consideration. But having said that, I'm gonna concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation and recommend denial.
We have a motion to deny.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? We have a motion to deny, so your vote, a yes vote would be to deny. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
The motion to deny passes. Item J4, rezoning request, REZ 20-012, Black Diamond Construction by C. Kelly Wilson, located along Shallow Water Way. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD, planned unit development for a residential subdivision. The size of the site is approximately 60 acres. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. And our final rezoning hearing tonight is, as stated, at the end of Shallow Water Way. Uh, just for a little bit of background, so you kind of understand how this came about. Uh, the Creekside Estates subdivision was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in 2007 as what was a conventional R-15 subdivision. As you recall, and when we rezoned the entire county and changed the zoning ordinance back in 2013, R-15 became RM. So it's, it's basically the, the same thing. The subdivision is adjacent to, uh, another subdivision to the north, which is called the Crossings at Little Creek, which was approved in 1998, again, also as a conventional R-15 subdivision. Uh, the preliminary plan for section two of Creekside Estates, which is the land area we're considering tonight, was approved by the Planning Commission back in September 24th of 2018 for 52 lots. Since that time, it's been determined that there is a significant amount of wetland soils on this property that are not appropriate for development. So in order to maximize the use of the more developable areas, the applicant is proposing this planned development request to reduce the lot size but still retain the lot yield, which he had originally, uh, been approved for. Uh, the information that you can find in your, uh, on your iPads of the applicant's pattern book states that the development will contain 51 lots. Building lots will be a minimum of 7,200 square feet in size with a minimum 60 foot in lot width. How, uh, excuse me, homes will be a combination of one and two story with a minimum size of 1,200 square feet, and they'll have a minimum of 40% masonry on the front facades with the rest of them being, uh, vinyl type product. Uh, each house will have a two-car front entry garage. Uh, the setbacks are, are listed on your, uh, agenda packets as well and in the pattern book. And again, if you have additional questions or anything, we actually have a copy of the pattern book we put on the big screens if we need to. Uh, a neighborhood meeting was held on this request, uh, back in March of this year. The issues discussed included existing road conditions, drainage issues, and concerns about construction traffic. Uh, there was, there was, there wasn't much discussion on this particular application. Uh, again, there were questions asked about the development of the potential surrounding properties. Uh, there's several large tracks that surround this subject property, so there was some concern as to whether or not those properties were going to develop. Uh, I stated at the time and is still the same today that we're not considering any other zoning hearings or any other subdivisions on any of these adjacent properties. So after the discussion, uh, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. Uh, with that, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Demossi at this time? Seeing note, none, I'll declare the Board of Commissioners into recess and, uh, the public hearing open for item number REZ 20-012 for Black Diamond Construction. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Anyone?
Chairman Phillips, can I add a little bit more information?
Yes.
Uh, Clyde Roundford, Hustle Steel Engineering, thank you from, so much for hearing our request and working this out via Zoom. Uh, Doug's summary was very accurate and thank you, Doug, for all your help on this matter. Uh, the only thing that's a condition that is important to understand as far as the amount of lots, is this is a step system. And, um, so we, we had approval for the 51 units, or actually 52 units, um, based on the, the existing step system. So I just want the Commissioners to know that we are, we're changing the lot size purely based on the fact that there's, there's a lot of wetlands in the area. Um, the 60-foot width is something that CUD is willing to work with us on. And, uh, it's already, it, it's already approved septic wise, so we just wanna make sure you understood that. We're excited about it. The home qualities will be a little bit of an upgrade from the existing homes that are there. Basically the same size, a little bit more masonry on the units themselves. And the neighbors did have some concerns as far And the neighbors did have some concerns as far as commitments, as far as construction. And I'm representing Mr. Randy Fritzen with Black Diamond Construction. And Randy is committed, one of the biggest concerns was heavy equipment and we made a commitment at planning commission that when the site work is being done on-site, that the equipment will be, once it's on-site, it'll be staged there. Mr. Fritzen is really, that's his background as far as the excavation side, the site work side. So he knows the stress it puts on people if heavy equipment's coming in and out of the neighborhood. So he's committed to, once it's in, to keep it on-site. I mean, it's good for a cost-effective way to run an operation, but he understands the neighbor's concern with traffic as far as construction traffic. It will be done in two phases, so it's going to be a, you know, a length of time before the whole construction of the development's built out. However, you know, most of it'll be much of your lighterweight construction with, you know, the labor force that builds the houses first, have the equipment that comes through the neighborhood. And we'll have an amenity center that we are opening to the whole development so they can utilize that and also the green space that's available will be open to the whole development because it is tying into, you go through an existing neighborhood to get to these remaining 50, 51 lots. So with that in mind, if you have any questions, I'm available. But I thank you for Doug for his summary. I just wanted to get a little bit more information on how the catalyst for Mr. Fritzen to be out there would, you know, involve in the step system.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing no one, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and the Board of Commissioners back in session.
I've been out there and looked at this situation and all. And I talked to some of the neighbors and stuff around and I really don't see no problem with it myself.
Move to approve? Thank you. Have a motion to approve? And a second? Thank you. Any other discussion? All is in favor of the motion to, I'm sorry? I'm not sure I'll ever get used to it. We have a motion and a second to approve item number REZ 20-012. Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. We'll return to our regular agenda. This will be item number H, and this is a resolution to approve our consent agenda. And I'll call on our steering chairman, Craig Harris.
Mr. Chairman, we have numerous items on our consent agenda. I have looked over them. I find them in order and I ask for a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion or would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? I'll agree with Commissioner Harris that this, it's very lengthy, but all of them are pretty much cleanup items toward the end of the year and I also find them appropriate. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I'll call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yes.
Motion passes. Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business that's listed. Item K, reports by standing committees. Item K one, budget, finance, and investment committee, Commissioner P.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items tonight. First item is K one A. It's a resolution to, for the solid waste fund. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows for the convenience centers increased expense for maintenance and vehicle repairs $9,000 and a decrease in the assigned fund balance of $9,000. Next is other waste collections, an increased expense of $15,000 and a decrease in the fund balance for $15,000. That's for the increased number of electronic appliances that have been being turned in. As Mac said, everybody went out and bought a big TV and now they're getting rid of some old ones, but it's cost us an extra $15,000. Next is under miscellaneous, this is judgments where one of our vehicles had an accident, $40,000 and a decrease in the assigned fund balance of $40,000. Resolve this 11th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item K one A, solid waste fund budget amendment. Call the roll, please, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner P.
Our next item is K one B. This has actually got to do with the rebidding of our property casualty liability and accident insurances. There was some discussion the other night in budget about metric school. They investigated that, found that the school is not in the flood zone. Therefore, these numbers have been adjusted to reflect that and I think it's right at $35,000 less on what it was going to cost us because that school was found not to be in the flood zone. Having said that, I'll go ahead with the resolution. Whereas Assured Partners has requested updated premium amounts for Rutherford County's property casualty liability, crime, cyber liability, dental liability, and volunteer firefighter accident for the upcoming year. And whereas the annual premium for property insurance coverage from APIP, which is the Public Entity Property Insurance Program, is $812,700, effective July 1st, 2020. And whereas the annual premium for casualty liability and crime insurance coverage from RIT Global is $1,6174, effective July 1st, 2020. And whereas the annual premium for cyber liability insurance coverage from APIP is $7,841, effective July 1st, 2020. And whereas the annual premium for dental liability insurance coverage from Admiral is $3,684, effective July 1st, 2020. And whereas the annual premium for volunteer firefighter accident insurance coverage from AXIS is $3,942, effective September 1st, 2020. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute all required documents renewing the property casualty liability, crime, cyber liability, dental liability, and volunteer firefighter accident insurance coverage with APIP, RIT Global, Admiral, and AXIS through Assured Partners as the brokers, effective July 1st, 2020 and September 1st, 2020. Resolve this 11th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item K one B, the 2021 property casualty liability and accident renewal. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item K two, Health and Education Committee, Chairman Rhonda Allen. Rhonda, you still with us?
I'm talking away. I'm just talking to myself. Sorry. I'm faking. There's no formal report, but I do want to announce that there is a date change for our June meeting. Many times we have to kind of finesse the June meeting schedule to work around when budget meets. And so we are meeting on Monday, June 22nd at 5:30 as opposed to that Tuesday. So that's a date change for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Item K three, Property and Management Committee, Chairman Alan McAdoo.
Mr. Chair of the Board.
Thank you. Item K four, Public Safety Committee, Chairman Pettis Reed.
No report.
Thank you. Okay, five, Public Works and Planning Committee, Chairman Mike Kush.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just a couple items will give you the highlights of the meeting of last week. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Piercy, who was instrumental in making a motion and led the discussion approval to a change of the ingress and egress of the convenience center at Walter Hill. That was brought to the floor by Commissioner Piercy in an effort to, A, improve the safety first and foremost, but B, hopefully reduce the wait time for our citizens and constituents out there. So that is going to be worked on very soon to reroute traffic there in hope to alleviate that. The second thing we agreed on, there has been a lot of discussion about the Leanna Convenience Center and why there has been no action on that. We pinned down Mac Nolan and he is going to request a price to take that dirt work and some of that work out to bid. And he has promised to have that center complete by September. So this Public Works Committee will hold him to that date and try and press him to deliver prior, if at all possible. After that, we will move to the Rockvale Convenience Center with the improvements that have been long talked about there. But biggest item, which I talked about last month, but the RFI for the solid waste committee has put together, officially went to the world two days ago. Last month, when I talked about the RFI, it had yet to be vetted by our county attorney. He had, of course, as an attorney would do, had about seven pages of comments to make on our request. So we, we took those under advisement, made some changes, and the RFI was completed, updated, and sent to the cloud, the thunderstorm or whatever they call that, and went out to the world. So in August, we will be receiving packets back from all kinds of different technologies to give us an idea on how to handle our solid waste situation. And Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Commissioner Kush. Item K six, Steering Committee, call on Chair Craig Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is a resolution in support of the General Assembly passing legislation to allow for county commission members to appear electronically at public meetings. This legislation will not go in effect until January. It's be the first time that it can be introduced. And legislators asked us to give them a resolution in support of this. So I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners supports the ability of the county commission members to appear electronically at public meetings for health reasons or in the event of business conflict. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners would suggest to the General Assembly that any such legislation limit the ability to appear electronically for business conflicts to once per quarter. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners encourages the General Assembly to pass legislation embodying the foregoing. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it hereby voices its support for the General Assembly to pass legislation to allow for county commission members to appear electronically at public meetings for health reasons or in the event of business conflict. And further request the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation support said legislation. Be it further resolved, the county clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Rutherford County Legislative Body for its use and information. Resolve this 11th day, June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Robert Stevens.
Yes, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you. I had some concerns about this at the steering committee meeting last week. And the more I've thought about them, I think that we need to address those one way or another. And one way we can do that is to water this down and just send them the concept and ask the legislators in their wisdom to make the guidelines for us or send this back to steering to try and answer some of the questions that I have. And I've got a whole list of questions that pertain to what was just read. What qualifies as a health reason? If you have a headache, is that qualified? Do you have to have a doctor's note? And what if you have had a major surgery and need to miss multiple meetings, but you can only miss that one? What qualifies as a business conflict? My business can be done anywhere with what I do. Some people cannot take their business elsewhere. What constitutes a quarter? Is that literally January to March 31st and April 1st to June 30th, you get one miss? Or is it one miss in a 90-day period? If you miss today, then you can't miss for the next 90 days. That's not, that's not outlined in there. Who determines if an absence qualifies? Is that in the chairman's discretion or does the board have to vote on whether somebody's going to be excused and able to participate electronically? I don't want the board to vote because if somebody's absent, I have no idea why they're not there and I don't want to cast a vote on that myself. Who's responsible for keeping up with this documentation on when people miss? Is there going to be an official notebook somewhere that has a list of who missed what meetings and that polices that for us? How much notice is required? If somebody is going to be absent, can they call five minutes before and ask the IT department to set this up or do they have to give a day's notice or several hours' notice? The IT department can't just put it together in five minutes. So there needs to be some kind of guidelines on that. And does this apply to commission meetings only? Does it apply to our committee meetings? Does it apply to the other boards? Does it apply to the other boards and committees that we have, like the Planning Commission? So, there's so much unknown and uncertainty in this, I would like to make a motion to substitute the language what was read with something that's a little bit more generic and that leaves it to the legislators to come up with a statewide policy, and they can address all these concerns in their wisdom. Because if we send what we have and we get questions from them, like I just asked you, I have no idea what the answers to those questions are. And when they ask us, they're going to get different answers, because nobody has a uniform answer. So, I would like to offer this as an amendment to the resolution. A resolution in support of the General Assembly passing legislation to allow for electronic appearance at public meetings. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners supports the ability of county commission members to appear electronically at public meetings from time to time, with guidelines to be determined by the General Assembly in its discretion to prevent the abuse of this process. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners supports the ability to allow members of other boards and committees of Rutherford County to meet electronically from time to time if the majority of the county legislative body votes to allow such boards and committees to come under the same guidelines established by the General Assembly for members of the county legislative body. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners encourages the General Assembly to pass legislation embodying the foregoing. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it hereby voices its support for the General Assembly to pass legislation to allow for electronic appearance at public meetings from time to time as outlined above, with guidelines to be determined by the General Assembly to prevent the abuse of this process. And further, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners requests that Rutherford County's legislative delegation support said legislation. Be it further resolved, that the county clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation for its use and information. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would offer that as an amendment.
We have an amendment to the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner P.
Yes.
I'd like to offer a second, and I'd also say that, I agree with Commissioner Stevens, I don't think we need to set up a law of rules. I've actually talked to Representative Baum about this, and he's one, at least one of the representatives who asked that we pass something at the commission level and that they would bring that forward when the legislation meets again. It's too late to do it this session. But I think we're overthinking it and, you know, give them a free hand on how they want to set it up. So, that's why I'm second to this amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second, an amendment and a second to the motion. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I guess my question is, I'm assuming that this is intended, that the legislature would pass a general act, not a private act pertaining to Rutherford County only. So, really and truly, the only thing I see that we need to do is be in support of that. Let's let the legislature figure out. They're the one that's going to make the law. We're not going to make a law. We're going to go by the law that the legislature comes up with. And I would assume it would apply to all 95 counties, other than those such as Davidson that has a metropolitan form of government, et cetera. So, I think really and truly, we don't need to get real nitpicky about who's going to verify that you're sick or not sick and what your business is and all that type of thing. Let's, I'm sure the legislature will be thorough enough, they have a great staff of people, including a lot of attorneys, and that they will outline that type of thing. So, I really think we're kind of getting the cart before the horse. Let's just pass a resolution that's very simple, that we support the idea of electronic meeting when it's not conducive to be here for a valid reason. And, you know, that can vary, that's broad. Depending, I'm retired, so I don't guess I have a business reason to not be here. Sometimes I have personal reasons for not being here, possibly, although I think my absenteeism has been very sparse in the six years I've been here, including showing up in a ragged t-shirt the night my wife was in the hospital, because she said, "Go to the commission meeting, I'll be okay." So, I think we're kind of getting the cart before the horse. We just need to pass a resolution, a simple resolution, that says, "We support the idea of the legislature coming up with a way for us to meet electronically when we're hindered otherwise occasionally," and I think it should be occasionally, "from otherwise meeting that we can still represent our constituents." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gurley. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Gurley. This was brought to me as a support. I understand and appreciate Commissioner Stevens' concern, but I do agree with Commissioner Gurley, this is a support. And if we want to get to every single question he wants to answer, well, then we can do that. But I was asked to give our support for this, and that's what I did. And then I felt like I did not want this to be where you can just do it anytime you want. A quarter to me, Mr. Stevens, is three months. If you want us to send this back to Steering and be specific on every single thing, I mean, that's up to this commission. But this was a support asked by our legislation, and that's one of the reasons. And let me give you one example, right here in front of you. There's our mayor. He doesn't have COVID, but he's sick. And that's a good reason for it to have right there, because right now, we have a slow night. But what about when that RFI comes in and we got to know something? What about when we vote on waste management, vote on this dump? We need to have his input. And I just want you to understand, I think it's very important, and I don't think this commission will, you know, abuse this, abuse this, and that's not us. You know, you just sit here and had a rezoning on a guy, said he wouldn't do something, and we voted on it, and I'm okay with that. But I don't think that this commission is looking to just never show up and always do Zoom meetings. And I don't think it's like that at all. I promise you, this was asked as a support, and that's why I brought it to the Steering.
Mr. Cook.
I will testify, if you want me to say it that way. Back in March, when I had to have back surgery again, I was able to be on telephone for the first time with OIT, so, and have a meeting. And it has worked out real well. I think in 30 years, I have missed three meetings due to sickness and surgery. So, I think it's a good idea. I don't think you should miss just because I don't want to come. I think it should be mandatory that we do come, because you learn a lot from, and it's hard to hear over the television.
Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I know when we discussed this in Steering, we had some questions and things about this, but I think if you look at this resolution, it's about as generic as you're going to find. It does suggest some things there, but what you got to understand, we're one out of 95 counties. And if 95 counties send in a resolution saying we're interested in this, by the time this gets to the legislature and it goes through the committee process and what they discussed right there, we're just basically really given a resolution of what we think and what is given here. I'll never forget going through three committees with talking about the Second Amendment, and how many times I was told, said, "Well, you're only presenting on an amendment." And then where it goes from there. Well, this is an amendment that's going to our state legislature for them to discuss. I think this is about as generic as you're going to get from one we're sending here, other than the fact, say, "Hey, we're all for it." Well, I think this is pretty much there. I mean, you're not getting much further than that, but I think it's okay where it's at.
Anyone else wishing to comment on the amendment to the original motion?
I have a question for Mr. Harris.
Yes, Commissioner Piercy.
What they're asking us to do, how is it any different than what we have done in the last six weeks?
Well, right now, we're on an executive order, so that's going to expire, and then we will no longer be able to do Zoom. This is where, once, I mean, this has to be introduced, Commissioner Piercy, in January 2021. And it's just going to be introduced, you know, it has to go through all the committees like Mr. Reed said, and then passed. But the executive order, once it expires, we will no longer be able to do this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Robert Stevens again.
Yes, Commissioner Stevens.
I'm not sure if I wasn't clear earlier or not, but this amendment that I offered is more generic than what was presented from the Steering Committee. It says nothing about reasons why someone might miss and be considered able to use the electronic meetings. It just asks that from time to time that the legislature allow that to happen if needed. It takes away the once per quarter. There might be, if somebody's had surgery, they might need to miss several meetings or committee meetings in a row. And these are all things that would be better addressed in Nashville. What I've presented as an amendment just clarifies that we ask them to make some kind of rules so that people can do that in the future if it's needed. It takes out all of the specific suggestions that are made in what was presented at Steering Committee. But it also asks them to consider allowing other boards and committees to meet electronically too, in addition to just the county commission, the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals, the audit committee, all these other things that aren't standing committees of the commission would benefit from this as well, and that's not included in what was presented from Steering Committee. So, I believe the amendment is more in line of what I'm hearing that people are trying to do, which is to send something in support of allowing electronic meetings in certain situations, and for the legislature to figure out what those are, and to make rules and guidelines for us that we can follow. And so, I'm not sure what I presented, how it wasn't more generic than what Steering did, but I would ask you to vote for the amendment and send that to the legislature for their consideration.
Would anyone like to hear that amendment read again?
Okay.
Commissioner Stevens, would you mind reading your amendment one more time? And if you would, speak up just a little bit and read more slowly.
Okay, I would be happy to do that. It's very similar to what Steering presented, with some minor differences. It's a resolution in support of the General Assembly passing legislation to allow for electronic appearance at public meetings. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners supports the ability of county commission members to appear electronically at public meetings from time to time, with guidelines to be determined by the General Assembly in its discretion to prevent the abuse of this process. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners supports the ability to allow members of other boards and committees of Rutherford County to meet electronically from time to time if the majority of the county legislative body votes to allow such board and committees to come under the same guidelines established by the General Assembly for members of the county legislative body. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners encourages the General Assembly to pass legislation embodying the foregoing. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it hereby voices its support for the General Assembly to pass legislation to allow for electronic appearance at public meetings from time to time as outlined above, with guidelines to be determined by the General Assembly to prevent abuse of this process. And further, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners request that Rutherford County's Legislative Delegation support said legislation. Be it further resolved, the county clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation for its use and information.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Anyone else question or comment on the amendment? Commissioner Gooch.
A brief question. So, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that members of our delegation came and asked for this resolution?
They wanted our support.
Our support. Now, on the resolution that you wrote, is this in consultation with what they were kind of asking for?
For me, Mr. Gooch?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I have not consulted with any of our legislative delegation about this. I'm not sure that they've even formed their own legislation to present on the General Assembly floor. I helped draft this to be in line with what the Steering Committee moved.
Thank you.
Other questions on the amendment? Ready to vote on the amendment to the original motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Rhonda Allen.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I echo the same concerns that Commissioner Stevens had, and part of it is, I don't want to put any of us in a position where we have to be the hall monitor for each other. You know, physical participation does not necessarily equate to a good commissioner. You know, I know each of us have probably seen folks come in, some who are more prepared than others, and so, I just don't think that we need to be in that spot of having, like I said, be hall monitors for each other. So, I would like it to be as generic as possible, I would like to support it. I think the amendment does that, and I think the less language we put in there right now going forward, the better off we'll be. Because, like you said, when it gets to Nashville, they're going to come out with something that they feel like works for all 95 counties. So, that would be my reason for supporting the amendment.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Anyone else? Ready to vote on the amendment to the original motion? Call or roll.
Mr. Gammon?
No.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Rather?
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Gammon?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo?
No.
Commissioner Ely?
No.
Commissioner Gooch?
No.
Mr. Shirino?
No.
Motion to amend passes. Now, we're back to the original motion as amended. Any discussion? Call or roll.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Rather?
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Shirino?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to take this time, thank you for what you've done tonight, and I'm glad that I made it interesting.
That brings us to the conclusion. Item L, we've already processed. I'd like to remind everyone that our annual meeting is scheduled for Friday, the 26th of this month. It will be a 9:00 a.m. meeting here in this courthouse. Friday, the 26th, 9:00 a.m. Any other business or announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner P.
Couple things. We have a public hearing on our budget that is proposed for next Tuesday, the 16th, at 7:00 p.m. Of course, the public, I understand, will be able to attend in person, they can They can call the courthouse to confirm that, or maybe Lisa can speak up on that. But that's Tuesday, the 16th, at 7:00 PM. And of course, all the commissioners are encouraged to either be there or attend by Zoom. And also, as a public service announcement, the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department has not had a hand breakfast for office reasons, however, since a change Saturday, the 20th, which is not this Saturday, but the next. They're planning on a hand breakfast at Kitchell. They will have tents set up out in the parking lot to help with social distancing that are required, and they'll be serving the food along with the CDC's recommendations. As you may know, they had the roof blown off of our fire hall there, and so they're trying to make some money to put that roof back on. They're calling it to help us raise the roof. But we would appreciate your help and any donations that you would give. Again, that's Kitchell Hand Breakfast, Saturday, the 20th of this month, and that'll be from 6:00 to 10:00. We would appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Anyone else? Commissioner Reed.
Out in District 8, if you've had an opportunity to look at the map to see where COVID-19 is located, if you'll noticed, it primarily has no red in it. It's all white out that way. So coming up Saturday night in the Iggleville community, they're having their annual truck and tractor pull. So let me remind you of that. It is happening at 6:00 PM. So if you're wanting to come outside, where there'll be a breeze and everything's fine, and there'll be a lot of truck and tractor fumes going, so it could kill everything that's around. So you're welcome to come out there and enjoy their truck and tractor pull. Also, July 4th, the Rockvale Annual Picnic will be conducted at this time. We're still saying it's going to happen, but they will be taking all the precautions that are necessary. There are things that will not be conducted as they have in the past, but they are going to go ahead and have the chance for people to gather, as they have done for 94 years, I believe. So they're planning to go ahead and have that. So it'll begin at 10:00 on July 4th, runs about 2:00, so we invite everybody to come on out to Rockvale.
Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, David.
The resolution that we did for the police departments in our county?
Yes.
I know the other ones that are on Zoom would like to, will that be in the mayor's office so we can sign it as well? I definitely want to sign that.
Yes, in the mayor's office. It'll be in the mayor's office if anyone wants to stop by before or at our June 26th meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay? Is that okay, Commissioner Gammon?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I just was informed that Deputy to the Mayor, Steve Sandlin, will probably have that in his office if anyone wants to stop by and sign that. Or you can sign that resolution at our Friday, 6/26 meeting. It'll be available for you then as well, those of you that are attending via Zoom today. Any other announcements? Any other questions? This chairman would like to thank you for your patience with my inadequate handling of motions and other things, and I'd also like to thank our county attorney for not ripping off my neck and spitting me out. He usually does that with good cause, and I thank you for your patience, your participation, and your attendance. With that, we are adjourned.